I would like to welcome you to the October meeting of the Residents Association. And I am Kathy Vander Vliet, the President, and glad to see those of you here. Before the end of the week, the video of our meeting will be broadcast for those who could not attend, so welcome. Our invocation and remembrance will be given by the Chaplain, Leslie McCarrick.
If you all will kindly bow your heads and we'll open up with a word of prayer. Creator God, who is creating still, we lift up your name as the one whom we adore, the one whom we follow, the one who guides our lives. Be with us now as this meeting time begins. Lead the hearts and minds of your people to the appropriate places and decisions for the good of all those at Westminster Woods. We humbly ask that you continue to favor us with your abundant blessings. Keep us safe and well. We pray this in the name of the one with many names. Amen. I have a list of folks who have passed since the early to mid part of July until today, and so I will share those names. And an additional announcement, just so you all are aware, these names and all, since the beginning of the year, will be, their lives will be celebrated as part of our Vesper service this Sunday afternoon because it is All Saints Sunday. And it is an appropriate time to lift up those people who have been such an important part of the lives of many of us here on campus. And so with that, these are the individuals. Donald Bianconi, Audi Ed Bajalia, Thomas Cleland, George Conrad, Helen Craig, Dorothy Hicks, Patricia Huff, Virginia Kelly, Irene Lannan, Arnold Bill Larro, Georgia McLean, James McDonald, Russell Moore, Julia Moss, Marguerite Oakes, Paul Rondazzo, Gloria Reagan, and Betty Sessions. Thank you.
Okay, our secretary's report will be given by Gretchen Harris.
Good afternoon. Our regularly scheduled town hall meeting was held on July 22. We had in-person as well as a video recorded meeting. The minutes for the meeting were approved and published on MyW Live and posted on all the community bulletin boards. So those minutes will stand as published and posted.
Thank you. And our treasurer's report by Elizabeth Ray.
It has been a very, very quiet fiscal year to this point, compliments of COVID. There is, there has been nothing going on. The boutique just opened this month, so tomorrow we'll have an opportunity to collect the donations they have received and find out that, hey, we have some more money so we can continue giving our employees their quarterly awards. I'm looking forward to that. Bingo is going fairly, and the only activity that, which is actually very, very worthwhile, is the Employee Christmas Fund. We ended September with about $34,000, and thus far in October, we brought in about another $50,000. So thank you so much to those who have already donated. And we are looking forward to the procrastinators putting in their share next month to bring it much closer to the committee's goal of $150,000. We have 88 now, so we still have a long ways to go. The last set of minutes for September have already been posted on the website under the Resident Council folder with the minutes for September. Thank you.
Next, we have the quarterly awards. And just for everyone's information, the little packet received by the employees contain a certificate, a nice little pen, which I see on some people's name tags, and a check. So we'll start with the Health Services Committee.
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, Mr. Executive Director, thank you for this opportunity. This is Wayne Letizia. I am the chairperson of the Health Services Committee here, have been for the last couple of years. The Health Services Committee this quarter is pleased to award people who have kept us going during this COVID time, kept us going health-wise. So what we're dealing with are people who have done the paperwork, who have seen that we're able to get back to the hos, from the hospital to our facility, who have done the paperwork to maintain the quality that we have transmitted with Medicare services and, and the Agency for Healthcare Administration and all the paperwork that needs to be done. And once we're back to our facility, for those who have helped us to regain those facilities that we have lost as far as physical and occupational deficits. So we're happy to, this, this quarter, to present these awards to the following people. The first one is Franco Pataxil. Franco is a physical, has been a physical therapist for 23 years. He is a graduate of De La Salle University. He, he has worked at Westminster for five years. Franco frequently trains for triathlons. Oh, gosh. He loves running, cycling, and swimming. He has two daughters, Zoe and Natalie, and he loves to cook for his family. Franco, from our Physical Therapy Department, we're happy to award this award to you today. Okay. Thank you. Next is Laverne McNue. Laverne is a native of the Philippines. She moved to the U.S. in May of 2002. She went to Kaiser University to study occupational therapy and is blessed to have been able to work here at Westminster Woods. I think, is this the first place that you, that you applied to? So she chose the best first. So she is happy to be a team player at all times. She loves the residents. She loves to sing, especially in her choir. She loves listening to Christian music, going to the beach, and gardening. She is a senior red belt taekwondo going for her black belt. So don't fool around with her. Laverne, thank you so much for being a faithful employee. Thank you. Our next awardee is Kelly Ann Ellis. Is Kelly here? Kelly is not here. Well, Kelly was originally from Long Island, New York, and she'll need to talk to Susan about that, who also grew up in New York. I won't tell you what town, but she was born in Amityville. But Kelly has lived in St. Augustine for 20 years. She has been an admissions coordinator for 11 years and has been at Westminster Woods for nearly four years. And thanks to Kelly, we're able to get back into our facility after being in the hospital. Our next awardee is Susanna Moran. Susanna has a long career, starting off as a CNA at age 17. Two and a half years ago, she moved to Florida to be near her aging mother, who thankfully is in good health, and wound up here at Westminster Woods on Julington Creek as our business office manager. So she takes care, makes sure that we're, that our bills are handled correctly and the insurance companies pay for what they're supposed to. So that's very good. She spearheaded moving the employee enrichment center and completed a year-long Leading Age Leadership Academy and earned her Florida Nursing Home Administrator license. So that's good to know also. Okay, Suzanne, thank you for being a wonderful team member. Our last awardee is Lisa Kruger, who is a native of Wisconsin. And she owned a horse ranch for 26 years, where she bred and raised national and world champion horses. She moved to Florida in 2019, and she loves being a part of the Westminster family and the residents who live here. She is not here today because she is showing her horses at the World Championship Show in Fort Worth, Texas. But Lisa is our fifth awardee for this time, and we're happy to award her an award also. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
And Dave Dingfield will represent the Maintenance, Housekeeping, and Security Committee.
We have two that we're privileged to recognize with awards today. The first one is Asmando Evangelista. I'm German background, and I don't pronounce very well. From housekeeping, he's technically a housekeeping floor technician. They do all the setups. He and his brother-in-law, Roger, do the setups. They do moves, they do carpet clean, they do windows. So the, the two of them drive around, and sometimes they have little drag races out there in their golf carts. But also, his wife is Myrtle, you've seen her probably, over in therapy. So we kind of got three of the evangelists around here today. It's our privilege, though, to recognize him and give him this award, and we appreciate it from the residents of Westminster Woods. We want to thank you. Our second award is for the maintenance, and he's not here, Kenny Johnson. I think most of you know Kenny, who's been on staff since 2014. He has a stepson that works here with us. He kind of keeps an eye on that stepson. But Kenny is really a, very much a team player. He'll stop and help any one of the residents, but he helps his teammates carry out their responsibility. He is also, by the way, a certified or credentialed CNA, so after his maintenance work, he often goes to work in the health center because of that role that he plays. So would you join me in congratulating Kenny, even though he's not here today? Thank you.
Bill Tally is Chair of the Residents Lifestyle Committee.
Also Chair of the Christmas Fund, and I'll reiterate, by the way, here comes Kenny. Let's give him a hand. Hey, Kenny? I'd just encourage everybody who hasn't donated to please do it because our employees are, are so very important to us and dear to us and have done such a great job. Our Resident Lifestyle Employee of the Quarter is Tim Curtis. Tim was born in Michigan, raised in Indiana, educated in Illinois, went to Hawaii, no, worked for 25 years in distribution, operational logistics, and he's lived in several states and traveled in many, many others. He's joined Westminster in, let's see, 2011, and went from temporary part-time to full-time. He was Employee of the Year in 2012, and he, he'll reach his 10-year mark here in 2021. Tim is, like many of our employees, but Tim's very special. He's more than a driver. He never says no to do anything outside his job description. He's brought stuff to my house, for example, when he was not required to do so, he just did it. Great, great contributor. Even offers to do things, and in this, my case, did it before he was asked. So he's really the kind of fellow that really deserves this kind of award, and I'm so pleased to give it to him. And there was a comment from somewhere, is your head swelling yet? Thank you.
And Wayne Sims is Chair of the Dining Services Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. One of my recipients is not here because she's in school, and the other just arrived because she does some manage things in the dining area. You know, I suppose each of us chairpersons have the same feeling that our department is the most important one that goes, and certainly dining is, is included in that because of the necessity that we all have to eat. And it's, it's, there's been a lot of unusual demands on dining in, in the past seven or eight months with the start of delivery foods and takeouts. It means people that normally are like directors and assistant directors of dining, people who are chefs and cooks, find themselves out on the golf cart delivering meals at times. So there's been a lot of transition and a lot of activity that goes on. And I know that everybody has a feeling that theirs is the only oxen getting gored, but I think the goring goes around in pandemic times. We have two excellent candidates for quarterly award today. The first one is not here. She's a recent eligible candidate. She's been with us for 15 months. And in the dining room, those who meet her are almost unanimous in saying she's, without question, one of the finest wait persons we've ever had. She gets more positive comment reviews than anybody else, I think, in the entire staff. She's only been with us 15 months, which means this is the first time she is technically eligible to be a quarterly award winner. And that she is named that in her first eligible quarter, I think speaks well of the things that we all think about her. Overall, as they say, she's a great person to work with. Sometimes if she sees a dishwasher who's behind and needs a little assistance, she'll drop everything she's doing and go wash dishes with her. It's the kind of person we love having with us, and we're delighted to say that Gracie Garris is one of the recipients of the award this quarter. The other is just misvaluable. She received this award back two years ago, I think. So she's, she's, as opposed to Gracie, she's been with us for quite some time. Most of you know her as Shun. She's the engine, they say, that drives the Rapid Recovery Unit. Now, you may not know, the Rapid Recovery has its own separate dining facilities and dining room, and there's a lot of effort involved up there. And then they, the Transition Unit has been declassified, and it has become a part of Rapid Recovery in the dining area. So it's meant a lot of things have gone on, and this lady has been right in the midst of every bit of that. If it's a daunting task, she's going to be doing it. She operates with the precision of a fine Swiss watch. Those are the words of Director David. And that's enough for me. Ladies and gentlemen, our award winner is Kiotra Shun Williams. Kiotra, congratulations, dear. Thank you very much, and enjoy the award and spend the money wisely. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you all. And now Laura Staton will present the Volunteer of the Quarter.
So what year is it? It is 2020, and the Quarterly Volunteer Awards reflect that. And we're going to do things a little different. They met recently, and Pam said that they unanimously decided that there are two groups that we are going to recognize, and I think it's a fabulous idea. What's been keeping you going other than jigsaw puzzles? Books, right? The library never closed at all, so someone was always in there keeping it going, keeping it organized. Excuse me. That was a team of library committee members. That team we're going to award today, one of our quarterly awards, is Betty Francis, Marguerite Butler, Ruth Eckstein, Kathy Vander Vliet, Dottie Kazoil, Kitty Lemmy, Wendy Teeter, and Judy Craven. So thank you for keeping us going, reading, and keeping that library open. Yes. Oh, wait, it's still 2020. There's more. We are so blessed with all of our volunteers. We have another outstanding group, excuse me, to honor. Just when we began to get resident volunteers involved after months of nothing, these gentlemen begged to be put to use. Once WWJC got the thumbs up, the residents stepped up as our first resident volunteers to be sent to the front line. They deliver packages, acted as USPS deliverers for a while, and they continue to help in a big way with driving the tramps. Once again, I'm very honored to recognize these gentlemen. I use that term loosely maybe, but Jim Cohen, Marion Broughton, Sam Sowers, Dwight Bailey, Dave Dingfield, John Scott, Wayne Sims, Howard Smith, and Dan Pacelski. Thank you to everyone.
And now a report from our Executive Director, Brian Tenney.
It is great to see you all. I hope that this is on. If not, I guess I'll be advancing this way. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Committee Chair people. And also, I want to recognize and thank all of the award winners as well as the resident volunteers who were recognized today. And what all this represents is that our community is alive. And here we see that we've got our resident walking group for the Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I don't know if you were outside yesterday between 4:30 and 5:30, but it seemed like it was trying to rain all day. And we ended up seeing evidence of that rain that was going on around us with these beautiful rainbows that just seemed to surround our whole community. The first one that I saw was ending right here in the creek. And then, as I drove home later, I saw another one right in front of me, and by the time I got home, they were reaching out to the beach, it seemed like. But it was really beautiful to see that and to be reminded of God's faithfulness to us, especially during this difficult year. It is still 2020, but 2020 is starting to come to an end, and it seems to be coming to an end quickly. We also have a lot of evidence of life with the pumpkin head scarecrows that have all come to life right now, and, and that creativity that is around. Also, the, all the voting that is going on during this election year, our residents in the health center, our residents in assisted living, as well as all of you all, have probably cast your vote or getting ready to cast your vote shortly. So thank you all for your participation in creating life here at Westminster Woods on Julington Creek. One of the first things I wanted to share with you is our occupancy during this time. I think that a lot of people think that people aren't looking to make changes or to move into communities such as this. But I can tell you that it's been very active here since April. We've now gone six months. We're halfway through our fiscal year, and our independent living occupancy right now is 96%. We've had 12 move-ins and nine move-outs of independent living. The majority of those move-outs from independent living, you know, being to another level of care. And then we still have three reservations and a potential fourth that might be coming in today, according to one of the sales counselors. So our sales team is doing a great job. People have a great appreciation for this community and the culture that you all have created here at Westminster Woods, and people are still willing to move here on a regular basis. So be confident in, in these numbers. Both our independent living and our assisted living numbers are greater than national averages right now. Assisted living is 93%. That is down from the beginning of this fiscal year. I think we were pretty close or at 100% occupied back in April, but we have had eight move-outs and five move-ins. But we do have three reservations in assisted living as well, so in the next couple of weeks, we do expect to have some new people moving into assisted living. From our previous reports and town halls, I represented that our health center has been the area that has been lagging the most with the restrictions on elective surgeries and just everything that's going on. You know, a lot of publicity about the COVID cases in nursing homes around the country, but we have seen an improvement in our, oh, there it goes. We have seen an increase in our skilled nursing since September. It actually started in September, where we got into the mid, mid 50s in our occupancy. We have 60 available beds or rooms in assisted, or in the skilled nursing. And we've been able to maintain that census in the mid 50s all the way up to right now, and today we're at 55 as well. So we're, we're encouraged by how things are going and improving with our skilled nursing occupancy as well. Our occupancy is a direct indicator of how we're doing with our finances. And I reported at the last town hall meeting that we ended the 2020 fiscal year, 2020, yeah, 2020 fiscal year at a 4% margin. And right now, halfway through the 2021 fiscal year, we are still maintaining a 4% margin, just, you know, slightly above. You've all been watching the infrastructure project as it's been progressing. I know that this is a, a joke for, for many because it's been going on so long, but when I arrived in April, nothing was happening, and we ended up choosing a new contractor to work with us. Coastal Utility has been a great company to work with, and they've been making continuous progress. The Phase 1 Drainage Project, which is a, I think, a, it's a big pipe that we got put underneath the ground over there on the other side of the health center, but it was like 42 inches or something to that effect. It was big. But it, it has been installed. We're waiting for the asphalt to go down, and we're still hoping that that's going to happen in the next couple of weeks. The lift station that has been installed in between B and C Garden Apartments is now complete. The liner's in. And as of today, we got Florida Department of Environmental Protection approval for that lift station. So in the coming days and weeks, we will be tying into the force main and then attaching all of the sanitary lines from the garden apartments to this new lift station. So those that have had or continue to have sewer problems in the garden apartments, hopefully that will be resolved very quickly with, with this new system. So both of those projects are either completed or very close to coming to a completion. I also reported at the last town hall meeting about the redevelopment plans and how those are still on schedule. We have 32 apartments of memory care assisted living that will be constructed over on Orange Avenue, and that is still the plan. We have, the bold ones are the updates. The county permitting has been submitted, and we have selected a contractor. and we have selected a contractor. So with the appropriate, with the funding that we're anticipating, and when Hank was here, he talked with you about the refinancing of the Westminster St. Augustine bonds and how that's going to help us with this project. We are looking to, starting this project before the end of this fiscal year, somewhere around the beginning of 2021. All right. So with everything that's been going on, we've been trying to make sure that we are able to provide the services to you all that you have come to expect. And as we've become more comfortable with this virus and having good procedures to protect our employees and ultimately you from the virus, we have made the decision to bring in a security service. I've reported this previously. And they have started orientation this week. As of Saturday, they will be going live and providing the security services. So there will be some new faces out on the front gate. And then, you will also see them roaming the campus and ensuring the security on campus. There will be checkpoints that they will be required to go to, and we will be able to monitor how they're doing with that. It should provide a great sense of security, as well as they, you know, will be coming with the CPR certification, first aid certification. And we will also be utilizing Channel 266 to show you the pictures of who's going to be working. We will bring the leadership of Secure America to our chat on the 12th, the afternoon chat on the 12th, to introduce their organization to all of you. And I do want, I did want to apologize. We've become very good at utilizing the Zoom and having the people at home or in the auxiliary spaces participate in this meeting as well. We have not gotten it to where it's able to be conducted by more than just one person. And we had a situation this, today, that was unexpected that has enabled us from being able to do the Zoom today. So don't be worried. We will continue to do that, and we'll try to make sure that we get somebody else trained so that we can do this even when Pam's not able to be here. So... The closely related to the security services is our gates. And I've shared with you before, but I, you know, feel like it's important for me to continue to reiterate this. But we had installed technology a few months ago which enables guests or people that are not residents to be able to push a button. And the camera activates, and it calls the security smartphone. And then, the security guard can then see the person that's at the gate and make sure that they've been screened or checked or whatever, and then allow them to go into the neighborhood without having to be right there. They can just push the button and open it right from their smartphone. So we are continuing to utilize that technology with the Secure America guards. They will be using our security phone. We've even gotten a tablet, you know, to make this transition a little bit smoother for them. And they'll be able to utilize that and be able to accommodate any of your guests, you know, when they get to the gate, so that you don't have to feel like you have to go out there and push the button and allow them to come in. You know, this should make it, you know, very easy for them to be able to access, depending on, regardless of where they're going. So the main campus will be manned by Secure America from 7:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. Then, the, like is happening right now, the main gate gets closed. The security guard starts to roam, do other responsibilities, and is able to respond to the gates through the smartphone technology that I just talked about. So those gates are closed from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And the reason that we do have security manning the gate on the main campus during the day is because we have other people that are helping to ensure the security of the campus. And at that time, we've got the most amount of visitors, the most amount of employees, and we have to put the screening and your health and wellness as the first priority with this virus that's continuing to go on. I wanted to introduce or ask David Graham, our dining service director, to come on up. He's got an update to provide to you in regards to dining services here in the month of November.
Hello, everybody. Okay. I was just playing with you. Hello, everybody. Thank you all for coming. And I've got some good things to talk about. So the first thing is we have a, we're introducing a new takeout special. And what this is going to do is closing a gap that we've had since March, where we haven't been able to offer hot dogs and hamburgers and fruit and cottage cheese and chef salads. They're kind of comfort food that a lot of folks would prefer to have sometimes. So we are not adding this to, we're not resuming the always available. But what we are going to do is, this is going to be a special that's offered starting off on November 3rd, which is a Tuesday. We're going to do this on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And it's going to be, as the name implies, it's a, it's a takeout special. You can get it between 12:30 and 1:00. And we're going to place the orders in the same fashion that orders to go are placed right now. So there's going to be a new, a new screen available on MyWLife. We, there'll be an order form, or you can speak to the hostess to place your orders in advance. But just as with dining room reservations, we're asking if people could make these reservations 24 to 48 hours in advance as well. So these, these will be full meals. So it's not just getting a burger, but it'll be a burger along with its accompaniments, as well as the chef salad will have accompaniments as well. So it's a full meal, full meal credit. And it's designed for you to take home, not to be eaten in the dining room. All right, next item, the Thanksgiving meal. So we're in an effort to make sure that we don't have to tell anybody that we, we can't accommodate because all the seats are, all the, you know, reservations are maxed. We're adding an additional service time on Thanksgiving Day. So at lunch, we're going to have an 11:15, 11:45, and a 12:30 seating period. And that should be enough so that we won't have to, hopefully, we won't have to tell anybody that, sorry, you'll have to take a meal to go. Also, on Thanksgiving, as we've done for many years on Thanksgiving and Christmas has a benefit to our serving staff, the evening meal, the dining room will not be open for the evening meal. But anybody who would like to get a second meal, you could eat, you can order it in advance and pick it up before you leave at lunchtime. Or during lunch, we will also deliver those meals for lunch as well as for dinner. And then, for the evening meal option, it's going to be the chicken salad croissant sandwich, which is so very popular, most people like. Okay, one, one thing that's not on the list here that I need to discuss is the efforts that we're making. And we're doing such a great job as a community controlling, you know, the spread of COVID. Face masks. You know, it's been a policy from the beginning that when you enter the dining room, please wear a face mask. I think there might be some COVID apathy maybe starting to set in. And some folks are pushing that envelope and wanting to come into the dining room without a mask. So please, you know, I ask you all and I ask you all to spread the word that, you know, you will be denied access to the dining room if you show up without a mask. Please help me spread the word. You know, this isn't a new word, but we can't drop our guard. You know, we have, we have done so well as a community maintaining our standards and keeping the infection so low. I don't want to see anything start from the dining room. And also, lastly, we're going to have holiday pie sale. So between November 16th and December 25th, you can place orders in advance for either pumpkin pie, pecan pie, or apple pie. And I think that's all I have. All of this information that I've discussed will be in the chimes coming out next week. And does anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you, David.
Thank you. From a fitness perspective, this has been a very popular aspect of our culture. And in a sequel to our Walk for Breast Cancer, we will also have a Walk to End Alzheimer's that will be on Friday, November 20th. And they will meet, those that want to walk will meet at the Health Center patio. And the walk is anticipated to be 0.82 of a mile. So, so that's coming up. Aqua classes are coming to an end. This was actually the first year that we were able to continue aqua classes all the way through the month of October. But at the end of October, aqua classes will end, and Jennifer and Jerry Joe will be doing two additional classes that will be published, you know, to help offset the absence of the aqua classes. Okay. COVID-19. Thought I'd take an opportunity to give you some summary of the number of cases that we've had on our campus since the beginning of all of this. There's been two independent living residents, three assisted living residents, and only three health center residents. We have had 19 employees. Our first employee, I think, tested positive back on July 5th. And we had gone the whole spring, you know, without any cases. But then, when the summer spike happened in the state of Florida, we also saw some evidence of that here amongst our employees as well. The great news is that not only is there so few residents that have had the virus, but whenever we found out that somebody was positive, number one, they were usually asymptomatic and only, only a couple, only a few had any symptoms. And then, only a few residents picked up the virus from either a contractor or an employee, you know, through, and I attribute that to not only the great practices of our employees, but also the procedures that Westminster put in place to make sure that we kept everybody safe and secure during this time. So we continue to wear N95 masks in both the health center and the assisted living. And all guests are expected to do the same when they come to those levels of care. We have recently just started, I think that that's my next slide, congregate activities in the health center and assisted living. This morning, we had congregate meals in assisted living. We started with breakfast. We're doing lunch and dinner as well. We're not able to allow everybody that wants to eat to eat together at each of the meals. But what we are doing is allowing some to eat together at breakfast, some to eat together at lunch, some to eat together at dinner as we get used to having congregate meals again. So activities, some congregate activities have been occurring in both the health center and assisted living. And we'll be starting the congregate meals in the health center as well. Here are a list of services that have been restarted. And I don't know that I need to read through them all. I thought I might highlight a few of them. The mail delivery was something that a lot of people were talking about for a period of time, especially with the history that we have with mail services here on campus. Having the mail person back to delivering and the delivery people delivering, that's been a nice welcome change to not only the demands of our staff, but also the confidence of our residents. Housekeeping services started a while back. It started off with limited services, and we've pretty much have gotten back to, you know, pretty normal, you know, services. We might be not quite making it 100% yet, but very close. But there is a question that comes up infrequently, and that has to do with, is Westminster going to be providing a credit for the housekeeping services that we didn't receive, you know, at the beginning of all of this? And there is not going to be a credit for housekeeping services. We all had to make adjustments in order to try to keep everybody safe and secure. And we were all following the, or we were trying to follow the guidelines that the CDC and the state were providing in regards to how to not spread this novel virus, which we really didn't know a lot about at the time. So we tried to do the best that we can, and we wanted to put your safety and health as the main priority. We also kept all of our staff. We reappointed staff to different areas. There's additional cleaning that we've had to do to try to make sure that we were keeping on top of high-touch areas and surfaces. And then, we also have extended other services for free that were not free before. So I think that it all ends up kind of balancing out in the end. I hope that everybody can understand and accept that response. So a lot of, a lot of great services have been restarted. And as we learned, even with the dining services, that it's much easier to shut something down than it is to start it back up. And we appreciate all of your patience and cooperation as we've gone through these transitions during the past six months. Upcoming is our Quality of Life surveys. Hopefully, everybody got the letter that I sent out last week. The Health Center Quality of Life Services are starting pretty soon, if not already. And they will be collected until December 5th. These are resident services. And there are also volunteers from our Health Services Committee who help to conduct these surveys with the residents that are not able to do them themselves but have a cognitive score above an eight to be able to do so. Assisted living surveys will be conducted in November, from November 9th to 20th. And then, the independent living surveys will be December 2nd through the 7th. So we will be following up with the neighborhood captains in the near future to, before the end of December, before the beginning of December, before the end of November, to get prepared for the independent living Quality of Life surveys. Just a little bit more information on the Quality of Life surveys. We use an organization, the survey from an organization called Senior Quality Leap Initiative. This was created by the leading healthcare communities in the country. And what we're able to do is to benchmark ourselves against each other within our organization, with others outside of our organization, and also identify common areas for quality improvement. This survey is used by both the United States and Canada and North America. And we are looking forward to getting your feedback. And we also want to reassure you that this survey is confidential. So we are not interested in who's saying what. We're just interested in getting your responses. So please, fill out the surveys. This survey that we're going to be doing is the Quality of Life Survey 2. There are two surveys, and the two surveys have different departments that are evaluated. In the Quality of Life Survey 2, housekeeping, dining, maintenance and grounds, security, wellness, and then, some ancillary services such as pharmacy, transportation, volunteering, and the overall active, active living community. and the overall active, active living community are the topics that you will be asked about in this survey. So with this survey, we hope that you will be strongly agreeing with the questions that you're answering, and we look forward to getting your feedback at the, in December. So that is the end of my report today, and I wanted to open it up for questions.
Before, before you take questions from the floor, let me throw a couple of questions at you that I have received.
Okay.
Since, as you know, we're limiting the attendance, so a couple of questions came in to me. One was, when is the new Magnolia lobby furniture coming in?
Yeah, I keep asking it myself on a weekly basis. I think I'm going to have to go to a different person to get a response, and I will keep you all posted on when we're getting the rest of the furniture back for Magnolia.
Second question, I'll give this one to you the way it was given to me. Why, in independent living, why are some people's children allowed to come inside and others are not?
Okay. So back in September, middle of September, I sent out a letter to everybody, making you aware that essential caregivers and compassionate caregivers or care visits were permitted. And the procedures for being able to have an essential caregiver is, one, a written request to me. The person then needs to get a negative test on the same schedule that we're testing here at the community. And these essential caregivers are, in essence, doing things for people that they did before. And so if you had somebody that was coming and helping you out in whatever respect, and I'm, I wasn't here before, I'm not, I'm not asking any questions, you know, was this happening before or not? We are happy to be able to allow people to come and get assistance and improve their quality of life, their emotional health, and, and that was one of the provisions that was in there as well. So essential caregivers are allowed to come and visit inside. Generalized visits have still been outdoors. And I say this all with a caveat and probably anticipation of, of a follow-up question, and that is that for those of you that are astute and keeping up with the governor's orders, you know that he has even relaxed that some at this point. So we still have to put our procedures together to be able to meet the governor's new orders. And as soon as we have that together, I will be communicating that with you the same way that we communicated the essential and compassionate caregivers previously.
Thank you. Now it's your turn.
Wayne? Wayne, come over to the mic, please. If you exercise, if you walk.
20 more steps.
Thank you. Mr. Tully, you said that, that if visitors are coming in, they can go to the gate and press the button, and, and be led into the gate. Do they have to go to administration and, and fill out the, the form that they don't have COVID before coming to the gate?
Yeah, so there's still a login procedure for when people are coming, and they should be coming, and we should be logging who they're coming to visit and, and all. So that's just a, a matter of checking in, and then you can go on to the gate. But when they get to the gate and the gate's closed, then security is able to open it regardless of the time of day.
Okay, that part wasn't clear, whether they had to log in first, so thank you.
So a visitor must go to the main gate first before going to, say, Southwood?
Currently, either administration or the main gate and to log in, and then go to the destination that they're going to. When I was talking about the gates before, I was talking about the technology more than the visitation practices that are occurring right now, but that is one of the steps in the visitation process right now.
Must they make a reservation in advance? In other words, does security need to know they're coming?
Well, we're, we're providing a list, so we've got essential and compassionate caregivers and general visitations happening in all levels of care. So Assisted Living is providing a list to security and the receptionist for who's coming that day. The nursing center's doing the same. We have not needed to take reservations for independent living because the visitation tents are not being used to the demand that, you know, could have been anticipated. And I think that most people are having outdoor visits, you know, on their patios, or they're continuing to go and visit family and their homes versus having an outdoor visit here.
Brian, when you were talking about security, which is starting Saturday night, or Saturday, November 1st, I think it's worthwhile mentioning that for independent living, from that point on, these security people are certified in CPR and first aid to render assistance so that we have medical assistance round the clock available to us here. There's been a lot of work done behind the scenes by the Health Services Committee, by Brian and Rod, and the maintenance people with the security to bring a solution to COVID coming in and saying, we can't provide medical assistance around the clock anymore from the nursing staff. So through the summer, we've been able to develop this, and we just, Brian said in a letter, I think it was last week, that I just thought that was important enough that it was, was not on that slide, and I just wanted to remind people that we now have, particularly the independent living people, have round-the-clock medical assistance available. That's all.
Thank you, David. Appreciate you providing that update. Yes, this is, the security is also helping to provide a solution to the emergency calls and, and the concern that residents have had with the absence of the nurse coming on those calls. So, so we're working on that. We also have been interviewing for a part-time life resource nurse to work with Cynthia. We had a bite, but I think that she might have gotten off the line today, and so we're continuing to search for that. But I was, I was hoping to be able to tell you, based on communication I had earlier this week, that we were expecting that position to be filled in the next couple of weeks. So I'll keep you posted on the progress that we're making there, but we are happy to have Secure America partnering with us. They are going to be doing the security 24 hours a day right now, as we're going through COVID still. But if and when we get through COVID, it could be expected for us to go back to having maintenance provide the security services during the daytime shift the way that they always have in the past. So we'll keep you posted, but right now, they're going to be here 24 hours a day.
Any other comments or questions?
Brian, now that you have DEP approval for the list station, will we soon be getting sodding and landscaping done between B and C?
Oh, yes. The landscaping is something that Rod is very proud to be doing over there, and I believe he's expecting to make it quite nice because of the inconvenience that those residents have had to endure, you know, during this construction period.
Yeah, it's kind of an eyesore. If I lived there, I'd be really looking, getting, biting at the bit for that. One other question is, considering that we now have our hairdressers coming and everything is appointment only, can we start looking into getting the massage therapists back? Is that, since that's also appointment only?
The massage therapy has been a question that has come up from time to time, and it is something that people are wanting to have back at this point. We have not gotten to the point of feeling comfortable with having massage therapy on campus due to how close of contact and intimate, you know, that service is with this virus. So we aren't endorsing it here on campus yet. It is being talked about and being requested from time to time, and I will let you know when we get to the point of being able to bring the massage therapist back for appointments.
Robert?
It would be very helpful, I think, for those of us living in independent living to receive some very specific instructions about what happens at night when we pull our emergency button or dial 911, what we should have done within our units to prepare somebody to come in, and what will happen when they come, and what will be the situation with regard to notification of our next-of-kin contact person, et cetera, et cetera.
You want me to address, or you?
The Health Services Committee is working on that because the need has been recognized, and Joan has just said we're going to do a big information kickoff in January. They'll have all their ducks in a row by then.
Yeah, and I want to be sure that we, we know what people are going to do so that we have things in the right place. Right now, you know, if, if something happens tomorrow, I'm sure I'm, I'm not prepared for what they need or what, and I don't know what they're going to do when they come in. And when your, your security people come, I, I don't know what they're going to do or what they're going to be prepared to do. So I don't know whether I want to wait till January. I think we ought to get something from the administration right now.
This is what, this is what David was alluding to when he was talking about the work that is going into this, and it's been recognized by both the Health Services Committee as well as the council that many people are not prepared for a medical emergency. And what we're accomplishing now and what the subcommittee of the Health Services Committee is working on now is going to be a great resource and service to our whole community. And we're looking to be able to have, not only improve, but enhance the service that we would be providing with the emergency response call as a result of the procedures that we're going to be putting into place. So it, there's, there's responsibility on everybody's part, and we will be providing that direction.
To help answer Robert's question, what you can do now, if you want someone to come to your home who's going to be of help to you, they're going to need information. Remember, we had the famous yellow cards, and everyone by now has either lost their yellow card or it's underneath the refrigerator. What you can do now is begin to gather all your, your medication list, your past surgery list, your immunization list, your insurance information, all the demographics that you would need if you were going to the emergency room or to the hospital. With that, pull together some information about what to do if you are leaving something or someone alone in your home. If you have a pet, do you have instructions as to who will take care of that pet if you are going to the hospital or to the emergency room? If you are taking care of a loved one who has a physical illness or who has dementia, who should come to your home when that person cannot be alone? These are the kinds of things that we need to put into the packet that Dave and Walt and I are, at this point, trying to create. We're meeting again today. But you have to begin to pull together that information. An emergency responder can only help you if you provide them some information about you. So if you want to start doing something now, start gathering those documents. Does that help? Or at least pull them all together so you know where they are? We asked some people at the committee meeting, how many have a list of their medications that they would take? It was like, okay, everybody has a med list?
They might be.
It's okay. So some people do and some people don't. Start pulling those documents together, but that's how you can help.
So what I need to have answered before, if that emergency person comes to my house, what are they going to do?
It depends upon what you look like. When they come in.
How will they call somebody?
Okay, but when you, when a person comes to your house, have you pulled the cord and are you laying on the floor? Have you pulled the cord? Are you unconscious? So the first thing they have to do is say, what does this person look like and what kind of help do they need? We did ask one of the paramedics to give us some information as to what would the paramedics like to see when they come to your house? And the first words out of her mouth were, please tell residents to call 911. It doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to the hospital or the emergency room, but she said, our paramedics can probably get to you faster than our security person or even a nurse could get to you. That person gets into your house and they need to know what's the matter with you. That's the first question. Are you laying on the floor? Did you have a fall? Somewhere in the course of trying to figure out what's happened to you, they're going to ask you, are you on any medications right now that could have caused you to fall? Are you undergoing any kind of specialized treatment for cancer or anything? Have you had recent surgeries? So there's lots of questions where you have to supply, provide that information in order to be able to help yourself. So if you want to start, start pulling all those documents together. The forms that we're working on are going to be, according to Dave and Walt, computer-friendly, relatively easy to fill out, and they're going to be able to slip into an envelope that can attach either to your refrigerator or to a wall, which is easily accessible. We've looked at an envelope that's hot pink that you can't miss. So as I said, we are putting all of our ducks in a row, and fortunately, we have Dave and, Dave Dinkfield and Walt Brinkman, who are experts in computers and figuring out what line goes where. Does that help? So everybody start getting your information together because you're going to need it.
And there's a very specific form for do not resuscitate, if that is anybody's desire, which the paramedics will only recognize one form. You can't just write DNR on a yellow magnet on your refrigerator. You have to have this form. So you can get that from our health resource nurse, and that will be a part of this packet as well. Other questions?
Seeing no one who wishes to speak, I want to thank you all for coming and your comments and questions, and thank you, and meeting adjourned.
Thank you.